I'm going to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to Order for March 23, 2015. We have two public hearings, if the clerk would read each of those.
Public hearing number one, amending the Schenectady City Code, Chapter 68, regarding the Housing Standards and Review Board.
Okay, number two?
Number two, regarding the possible closing of the pedestrian tunnel between Watts Street and Grouse Park.
Right, then for original consideration, if the clerk would read item number one.
Item number one, under final consideration, a local law amending Chapter 62 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady to allow for best value purchasing.
This was approved in committee a while back, and the questions that were raised have been resolved, so without objection on consent. Item number two?
Item number two, under original consideration, an ordinance dated March 23, 2015, authorizing the issuance of 9,114,495 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the City of Schenectady, New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance 2015 capital plan.
Again, discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number three?
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the, an intermunicipal agreement with the Village of Scotia.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number four?
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the closeout of an intermunicipal agreement with the Village of Scotia.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item number five?
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surchargeary for 16 South Church.
Discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number six?
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surchargeary for 18 South Church.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number seven?
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surchargeary for 20 South Church.
Again, discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number eight?
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surchargeary for 12 Union Street.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent. Item number nine?
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the sale of 410 Union Street.
And we do have an amendment, Ms. Porterfield.
President, I'd like to offer an amendment to change the selling price of this property to $71,000.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Mr. Riggi, all in favor of the amendment? Aye. And then, without objection, we'll put this on consent. Okay, item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution recognizing Schenectady County Community College's Women's Bowling Team as the 2015 NJCAA Champions.
This will be taken out of order, I believe Mr. Kozier's presenting that one, or Mr. Mutavaren is presenting that one, okay?
You're both.
Okay, you both are, okay. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution recognizing Schenectady Community College's Men's Bowling Team as the 2015 NJCAA Champions.
Okay, this also will be taken out of order. Item number 12?
Item number 12, a resolution recognizing the month of March as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Health Month.
This will also be taken out of order, Ms. Perazzo will present. Item number 13?
Item number 13, a resolution recognizing April 2nd as National Autism Awareness Day.
Without objection on consent, this will be presented at the ribbon cutting for puzzles. Then, item number 13A.
Item number 13A, a resolution recognizing Beverly Louis Sally during 2015 Women's History Month.
I'll entertain a motion to move this to the agenda, Ms. Porterfield, second, Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor? Aye. And then, this will be presented out of order. Okay, item number 14?
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1412 Albany Street.
This was discussed in City Development and Planning tonight, so without objection on consent. Item number 15?
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1811 Albany Street.
Also discussed in committee meeting tonight, without objection on consent. Item number 16?
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1089 Albany Street.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent. And if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll declare that meeting closed, and then we will move to this full City Council meeting for March 23, 2015. Please rise for the call to, the invocation by Reverend Dave Chitram of the Shri Ganeshmanir of Schenectady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Beloved brothers and sisters, with reverence, faith, devotion, and love, let us pray as one family. Pure, holy, divine, Lord of Lords, God of Gods, salutations and prostrations unto thee. Gracious Father, we thank you for this beautiful gift of life. We thank you for the grand world with its infinite resources. We thank you for your gracious presence today amongst us all. Blessed Lord, please bless me with the transcendental wisdom to lead us all. Bless the councilors and the rest of this congregation with integrity, understanding, and a resolution to accomplish the goals and objectives of this undertaking this evening. Supreme Divine Consciousness kindly remove the shortcomings, misunderstandings, and grievances of each and every resident of this county. Enlighten us, O Lord, that we can always be conscious of our true realities, be true to ourselves and others. Inspire us that we can always be humble and execute our duties. Give us the courage and the strength so that we can overcome our negativities and glow radiantly with supreme virtues. Sweet Supreme Lord, when we deviate from our divine words, forgive us. When we forget you and fight among ourselves, forgive us. And when we fail to respect all your creations as we should, please forgive us. Father, help us to create atmospheres of peace, harmony, joy, and blessedness. God, please bless this assembly, please bless this county, and bless America. Thank you, thank you very much.
I'll ask Chris Morris to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, justiciable.
All right, we have four out-of-order resolutions, and I'm going to reverse the order that's on our agenda, and I ask Ms. Porterfield to do the first one. Excuse me, Ms. Porterfield, let me do roll call first, I'm sorry.
Ms. Perazzo.
Present.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Ferrari is excused, Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Mutavaren?
Present.
Ms. King?
Present.
Okay, Ms. Porterfield.
I'd like to invite Ms. Beverly Louis Sally to please come behind the rail, and the folks that are with her.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Before I present the resolution, I'd just like to just make a couple comments about this year's theme. We all know that March is National Women's History Month, and every year, the National Women's History Month selects a unifying theme to be shared by all who want to promote women's history. The theme for this year is weaving the stories of women's lives, and it presents an opportunity to weave women's stories individually and collectively into the essential fabric of our nation's history. Accounts of lives of individual women are critically important because they reveal exceptionally strong role models who share a more expansive vision of what a woman can do. The story of women's lives and the choices they make encourage girls and young women to think larger and bolder, and give boys and men a fuller understanding of the female experience. Knowing women's achievements challenges stereotypes and up, and up, and social assumptions about who women are and what women can accomplish today. So today, I'd like to offer a resolution honoring Beverly Louis Sally during 2015 Women's History Month. Whereas, the 2015 theme for Women's History Month is weaving the story of women's lives. This theme presents the opportunity to integrate the diverse and compelling story of women's lives into a colorful tapestry highlighting the intricacies and interconnection of these stories. And whereas Beverly Louis Sally moved to Schenectady in the early 1950s from Blackbridge, Virginia, where she grew up on a 264-acre farm where tobacco, cotton, peanuts, and vegetables were grown, she recalls, "It was fun at times, but you had to go to work. We had a lot of chores. I started working when I was eight years old." And whereas she and her husband migrated north because he couldn't find work in Virginia, they were part of the Great Migration, where more than 6 million African-Americans from the rural south moved to cities in the north, midwest, and west during, between 1916 and 1970, in search of economic opportunity and to escape harsh segregation rules. And whereas, upon arriving at Schenectady, Mrs. Louis Sally and her husband both got jobs at General Electric in Schenectady. He is a welder and burner, and she is a stentotypist. Together, they raised their six children in Schenectady. After leaving GE, she worked as an executive director of Parker Daycare Center for 17 years. And whereas Mrs. Louis Sally was active in the Schenectady community, she joined Friendship Baptist Church, where she still attends services, and was involved with Carver Community Center, the Pleasant Valley Conservation Club, and the National Association for the Eventsman of Colored People. And whereas, at the tender age of 93, her words of wisdom for younger generations, "Just stay, just stay friendly and stay in church." Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council and the Mayor of the City of Schenectady pause in their deliberations to recognize Mrs. Beverly Louis Sally during 2015 Women's History Month. Madam President, I move the resolution.
Excuse me, seconded by Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
I was really surprised when I heard about it, but in a way, I want to thank you and the City Council for dominating me. Thank you very much. I want to thank my church family for coming.
Stand up church family.
Yeah.
Teams. So Mr. Kozier, Mr. Mutavaren, and Mr. Ross, and students, come on up.
Where are your students inside the room? Thank you.
Come on inside. We're gonna do the ladies first, so, so then, we're gonna do ladies before gentlemen.
Madam President, if I may?
Mr. Kozier, you have the floor.
Thank you. We have a resolution recognizing the Schenectady County Community College Women's Bowling Team as the 2015 NJCAA Champions. And whereas, the National Junior College Athletic Association extends to promote and foster junior college athletics on intersectional and national levels. And whereas, the Schenectady County Community College is committed to being the premier community college that empowers individuals to reach their greatest potential in exceptional and innovative education and training. And whereas, intercollegiate athletics are an integral part of the college's extracurricular activities. Whereas, the 2014-15 SCCC Women's Bowling Team recently won the national championship, national championship, I want to repeat that, defeating the runner-up Suffolk County Community College and Corning Community College. Whereas, Janelle Urin, where's Janelle? Very good, congratulations, a graduate of a local high school here, Notre Dame Bishop Gibbons, led her team to victory and was named the most valuable player of the tournament with her average of 187 pins. Very nice, very nice. I can do that in three games. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the City Council do hereby pause in our deliberations to commemorate the achievements of the Schenectady County Community College Women's Bowling Team and to celebrate their honor and acclaim that they have brought to our fine city. Madam President, I'd like to move this.
All right, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you for honoring us today. We worked very hard to come here and do our best at Nationals. Me, along with Sam and Kenny here, are graduating this year, and we're very glad to graduate as national champions. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job. Good.
Now switch class with you.
A resolution recognizing the Schenectady County Community College Men's Bowling Team as the 2015 NJCAA Champions. Madam President?
You have the floor.
Whereas, the National Junior College Athletic Association exists to promote and foster junior college athletic on intersectional and national level. And whereas, the Schenectady County Community College is committed to being a premier community college that empowers individuals to reach their greatest potential through exceptional and innovative educational and training. And whereas, intercollegiate athletics are an integral part of the college extracurriculum activities. Whereas, the 2014-2015 SCCC Men's Bowling Team recently reclaimed their crown as national champions, defeating the runner-up Suffolk County College, Community College by a total of 856 points. And whereas, Andrew Marades, a freshman, was named the most valuable player of the tournament with his highest average of 203.2. And whereas, Nick Pekowski, Pekowicz, sorry, and Justin Carl, also a freshman, was recognized for their standout performance by being named the National All-America Team for Schenectady. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberation to commemorate the achievement of the Schenectady County Community College Men's Bowling Team and celebrate the honor and acclaim they have brought to our city. Thank you, guys, congratulations.
Mr. Mutavaren, you need to move it.
Madam President, I move.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations, guys.
Well, we just want to say thank you, guys, very much. We worked hard for this, and we appreciate all the support. Thank you, guys.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, who I've known a long time, and City Council, this is truly an honor for me and for the team, and on behalf of Wilcoons, my assistant coach. This is the first, we really, I had thought we had a good shot this year, and we actually pulled it off. And not only are they winners on the bowling lanes, but they're winners in the classroom. My men average GPA is 2.9, my women's 3.1, and every sophomore on the team is graduating in two years.
Very nice.
So, and this is truly an honor, I am very humbled that you invited me here into this, I'm truly honored, thank you very much.
Mr. Ross, how long have you been coaching?
23 years.
20 years.
23 years, and we've known each other longer than that, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
But it's, but honestly, Schenecty, I've been living in Schenectady almost my whole life, and to bring this back to Schenectady and Schenecty Community College is really the highlight, it's a dream come true for me.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last out-of-order resolution, Ms. Perazzo, for LGBT Health Month.
Think we have a member or members of Schenectady Pride here?
Pride Center.
Come on.
You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing the month of March as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Health Month. Whereas, there is roughly 9 million lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people commonly referred to under the acronym LGBT, and more than 650,000 same-sex couples in the United States. And whereas, the LGBT community has historically lacked access to culturally competent healthcare and experienced discriminations at the hands, excuse me, discrimination at the hands of service providers and medical insurance providers. And whereas, health disparities continue to plague the LGBT community, and the fear of discrimination causes many LGBT people to avoid seeking healthcare. And whereas, New York is the only state in the country which celebrates LGBT Health Month, which encourages people to come together across settings and disciplines to participate in discussions about LGBT health disparities and advocate for the education of healthcare providers. And whereas, the Pride Center of the Capital Region, which serves the City of Schenectady, works to promote the well-being of the LGBT community and those discriminated against based on gender identity and expression. And whereas, the promotion of health is fundamental to the Pride Center's efforts through their peer support groups as well as community and professional education designed to enhance provider support to LGBT people. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to proclaim the month of March as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Health Month in the City of Schenectady. Madam President, I move this resolution.
Okay, is there a second? Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. Yes, congratulations.
Thank you very much for recognizing the Pride Center of the Capital Region and the hard work that we've been doing for 45 years, as this year's our 45th anniversary. And this is truly generational work that we've been doing from generation to generation, empowering the lives of this community, you know, around the Capital Region. So again, we truly appreciate your recognition and support of everything that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those of you who are here for the out-of-order ceremonial resolutions, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting, but please do not feel that you have to. I'm sure some of the students have some work to do for class tomorrow, so. Thank you. All right, we have two public hearings tonight, the clerk would read the first one.
Public hearing number one, amending the Schenectady City Code, Chapter 68, regarding the Housing Standards and Review Board.
I have two people signed up to speak for this, the first is Steve, is it Marsham?
Markham.
Markham, thank you. Now I see, okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, City Council, and Mayor McCarthy. My name is Steve Markham, I'm a member of SLYC, Schenectady Landlords Influencing Change. Referring back to the November 20, 2012 Gazette article by reporter Kathleen Moore, the headline reads, "Review Board Aide for Code Violations: City Landlord Disputes Would Be Heard." The article begins with, quote, "Schenectady may soon have a board to mediate disputes between the expanded code enforcement department and city landlords." To further, quote, "The board was supposed to rule on any complaints regarding code violations or rental certificate inspection failures for multi-unit dwellings." The goal, according to the city's code, was to give landlords a way to appeal code enforcement decisions without going to court. The article also states, "The board has the power to uphold, modify, or eliminate any code violation or inspection failure." It goes on to say, "In addition to determining whether an inspection went beyond the city's codes, the board could also determine that some violations were not serious enough to require sanctions." This information was publicized following SLYC's request for the city to reinstate this long dormant board that was still on the books since its creation in 1991. According to the above article, Councilwoman Lisa Perazzo, quote, "It seems to make sense," and planned to bring up the issue at a future meeting for changes and tweaks. It's been over two years since that initial article was published, and last week, we finally received the proposed revision of the Housing Standards Review Board. The term tweak does not even begin to describe what was done to this board. For example, in comparison to the above Gazette description of the board, the revision now states, Item 68-1, Creation Purpose, to receive comments from the public related to the housing standards requirement of the New York State and City of Schenectady, as well as operations of code enforcement in the Buildings Department. Also, Item 68-10, Powers. A, Rules and Regulations. The board is authorized to make and adopt such written rules and regulations as may be necessary for the proper enforcement and interpretation of this chapter. And to secure the intent thereof, such rules and regulations shall not be in conflict with the provisions of this chapter or any other ordinance of the city, nor shall they have the effect of waiving any provisions of this chapter, of any other ordinance. We ask, what exactly does all this verbiage mean, and what purpose does it serve? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris Morris.
Good evening, Madam President, Councilmembers, and Mayor McCarthy. My name is Chris Morris, and I'm the Director of SLYC. Nowhere in the drastically altered version of the Housing Standard Review Board do we find any reference to the very reason that SLYC was requesting its reinstatement in the first place. And that would be the appeals process and the power of the board to pass judgment on code violation issues. We feel the original intended benefit and purpose of this board has been obliterated and replaced by ineffectual, nonspecific words. From what we are seeing in this proposal, we can only come to the conclusion that the city just doesn't choose to relinquish any control in regard to code enforcement rulings and doesn't want to allow for any formal arbitration process. This impression only solidifies and furthers the sense of intimidation and oppression that many of us express. We are only seeking fair and just legislation encouraging us to help the city, not fight the city. We need to establish more security and sustainability in this business and create greater incentive for future investment. Only through cooperation, collaboration, and like-minded vision can we hope to achieve our collective goal. In closing, SLYC asks the council to address the issues that we have expressed regarding this revision by going back to the drawing board and work to restore the Appeals and the Powers sections of the Housing Standard Review Board as initially created. We understand that this board would have to take into consideration the concerns of City Council, the Mayor, and the Building Inspector regarding the importance of life safety violations. And we would not, and that the board would not interfere where appropriate. And having said that, we still ask that this board be allowed to determine the most expeditious and reasonable steps to best carry out an effective mission. So we thank you for your attention, and we in SLYC look forward to your response in the future weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no I have no one else signed up to speak for this public hearing, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed, and we will move to the second public hearing.
Number two, regarding the possible closing of the pedestrian tunnel between Watts Street and Grouse Park.
I have four people signed up to speak to this. The first is Patricia Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Councilmembers. I'm Patricia Smith, President of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association. The closing of Grouse Park Tunnel has been a longstanding issue. The tunnel was built to provide children safe and easy passage from Watts Street to the now-defunct Grouse Park School. The tunnel has long since outlived its purpose. It is now a quick ingress-and-egress escape route for criminal activity, which does not make it safe for our children or anyone walking through there. Upon canvassing the area with our petition to close the tunnel, I was informed of several incidents that have happened recently. A man wandering about in the backyard and driveway at 9:30 at night when the homeowner took her dog out for a walk in her yard, and a young lady who discovered someone had tried to slide open her storm windows and found her car vandalized. These incidents are very close to the tunnel. Neighbors who want to walk their dogs in Grouse Park discover drug paraphernalia and activity in the park that makes them uncomfortable to go inside the gates. We want people to purchase homes and residents of the area, and this is what they see and hear. Who wants to live with that? The damage that has been done to the park, the buildings, one burned down and the other boarded up and covered in graffiti, the playground equipment destroyed, and trash strewn about that is just disgusting. It is blight on our neighborhood and the city. With the closing of the tunnel, we may be able to improve its appearance and safety so that residents once again may enjoy the park. David Tanner has a wonderful video on the Internet which shows the park now and speaks of what it used to be. We understand that what used to be doesn't last forever, but it doesn't mean it should be destroyed forever. Over the years, and more so now, there have been numerous reports of theft, vandalism, and break-ins, some of which the residents were sleeping inside their own homes at the time. A home on Watts Street was also burglarized that night, and the tunnel would have been the only way for such quick work. These June 2014 break-ins had one family move out of their house the next morning, never to return, and the house just sold after nine months. Two empty houses on 21st Street were badly vandalized by kids who do not live in the neighborhood, and on one instant they passed it by, called police, and they were apprehended. This nice, quiet street now has vandalized properties. The safety of our residents is of the utmost importance. Most of the residents here have long-established homes and now lament on how unsafe it has become for them and who will want to purchase their homes when that time comes. Please, the tunnel serves no good purpose anymore. It only serves purpose to those doing no good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the petitions that I would like to submit, the 58 signatures, and so that they could be also taken and given to DOT. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Donna Foley.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, Madam President, and Councilmembers. My name is Donna Foley, and on behalf of my neighbors who live in the area of the Grouse Park Tunnel, I am here to support closing the tunnel. I have lived near the tunnel for most of my life. As you know, the tunnel was built as a safe walkway for the children living on the Watts Street side of 890 to attend Grouse Park Elementary School and the Grouse Park Playground. The school and the playground are no longer functioning in their original capacity. This disgusting tunnel has for many years been the corridor for those using drugs, drinking alcohol, and has a quick and easy escape route for committing crime. People who use the playground to run their dogs have complained about containers, litter, and drug paraphernalia left behind. The tunnel is not a viable access for emergency vehicles, and if the tunnel was closed, the suspects may have to cross the bridge at Duane and Watts Streets, making them more visible and the police better able to catch them. The crime activity has gotten worse in recent years, and our neighborhood has become more victimized by vandalism and by burglary in our homes and in our cars. Within the past two years, several homes have been broken into, even during the night when people are sleeping, which frighten me enough to have a security system installed. We feel the tunnel is a major factor that contributes to criminal wrongful activity that affects our homes, our personal property, and our quality of life. We hope the city and DOT will accept our concerns and close Grouse Park Tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Kelleher.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, Madam President, Councilmembers, and city residents. My name is Linda Kelleher. I'm a resident and property owner in the city. I'm speaking tonight as a concerned resident of the Central State Street neighborhood. As the president of Central State Street Neighborhood Association, as a delegate to the Schenectady United Neighborhoods, I try to remain vigilant about the city issues, especially public safety issues. Public safety is an ongoing concern of many city residents. The tunnel at Grouse Park is a public safety issue for nearby residents, residents of the north end of Central State Street neighborhood, and residents of the town of Rotterdam. It once served to link neighborhoods, has now become an escape route for criminals and vandals. I understand that this is an issue for DOT and that the members of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association are gathering signatures from nearby residents on petitions to submit to DOT. The escape route must be closed off. I support the efforts of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association and hope that the city and administration and council should also support their efforts to close off the tunnel at Grouse Park to promote public safety in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kelleher.
First, let me say happy birthday, Vince. I was asked to read this letter from Fred Lee and have copies of it, if you would. And if you would be so kind as to pass those around. Fred Lee is the president of the Schenectady Neighborhood Watch, of which I'm a member, and he's also the past president of the Schenectady United Neighborhoods, and he states as such, "Schenectady Neighborhood Watch is always concerned with enhanced public safety for all the residents and guests of the city of Schenectady and Schenectady County. There are numerous structural suggestions that we can have made to aid in accomplishing that goal. The closing of this tunnel would be a good step in this area, in this arena," he says. "When 890 opened the tunnel, it was most likely represented concession, and most likely represented concession, rather, to residents about dividing a neighborhood. Many of those residents have moved along long ago. It was, however, become a tool of criminal activity in the southeast section of the city and for the town of Rotterdam as well." As he continues to state, "I personally became aware of this existence 10 years ago when I participated in a ride-along with the Schenectady Police Department to serve on the civilian police review board. After about 30 minutes in the back of a squad car, at that time they had received a call where there was an armed robbery in progress at the convenience store located near the tunnel's entrance. The victim stated that the perpetrator ran down the street through the tunnel. On the far side, the witness on that south side said he observed a male running through the backyards and had pitched an object into one of the backyards, after they spent an hour with flashlights searching for what was presumed to be a gun. The incident required duplicate sets of police cars both sides of the expressway for fear of criminal circling back around. We, the Schenectady Neighborhood Watch, would recommend that the tunnel be equipped with strong gates, equipped with locks available to public safety officers, and in the event that the tunnel needs to be accessed, to serve as a pass-through for fire or man-made or natural disasters. We recommend that this be accomplished before the summer season, since there is normally an increase in activity during this season. As you've heard from other neighborhoods, this seems to resonate throughout the entire neighborhood, and we would certainly appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and we will move to the approval of the minutes of the March 9, 2015 meeting. Ms. Porterfield, Ms. Moser, who's second, Mr. Muttivaren, all in favor?
Aye.
Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, March 23, 2015. Under official from the Mayor, a list of appointments dated March 23, 2015. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports? Nope, okay. We'll move on then to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up to speak, and that's Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, and Mayor, on the best value, again, this was, you had it set aside for the affirmative action committee to come back and give the results. No results. It's still the same old thing that you had before. Under intent and purposes, you have completely discriminated towards persons with disabilities. In Paragraph D, it says that you would include such participation of small minority women-owned businesses and no person with disabilities. In November 26 of 2014, the city attorney committed legal malfeasance by having this city council and the mayor to sign off on the roundabout for $2.5 million worth of federal funding on Erie Boulevard. And prior to that, the city council also approved, along with the mayor, for the Erie Boulevard of $14 million, of which 13 million of it was federal funds. This is not an oversight. This is just a continualization of standard operating procedure. Paragraph 62-3, it says, "Award on the lowest bidder or best value." It says, "There is no preference giving to city Schenectady owner businesses." It says that you can award anywhere, whether it could be Albany, New York City, Buffalo, or anybody else. There's nothing there. 62-4, definitions, again, you're doing definitions of small business, certified minorities, or women-owned businesses. Again, excluding persons with disabilities, completely right out of the thing. Last year of March, Section 503 from the feds reasserted their obligation that the city governments and local governments have authority to make sure that persons with disabilities are included in purchasing services, goods, and so forth, and they even put a utilization goal of 7%. And this city still has not even complied with that. And then on the last one for requirements, 62-5, this is Muttivaren asked this to be put in, and you guys still did not even do what Muttivaren asked for when he made a motion and it was accepted by the committee. And it says, "The city of Schenectady should have a written justification if the best value awards on criteria that are not objective and quantifiable." Council Muttivaren said "Shall." He wanted written, and you've got the word "should" in here. This is the same stuff that you had before with no changes. And where are, again, I want to bring up, where are the recommendations from the affirmative action to correct some of this stuff? Again, you have to comply with Section 503. There are over 14,000 out of the 66,000 population of persons with disabilities that are in this city. And you have to realize that nearly over 50% of DSS is the city. By putting persons with disabilities back to work, putting minorities back to work, you'll be cutting off those property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up for privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, so I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Mr. Kosier, seconded by Mr. Muttivaren, all in favor?
Aye.
We will then move on to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have six people signed up to speak. The first is Anthony Carata.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Okay, what I'd like to speak about tonight is two things. One, my thoughts, first I'd like to say about J. Street Fire, my thoughts and prayers for the victims. But, J. Street Fire, I'd like to speak about how I feel as a resident that now is the time for city residents, not to be known that I don't know these victims personally, but now is the time, as a city resident, that we should support these victims. But I think how the mayor and your administration's handling it is a joke, okay? First of all, you got these victims that have been out of their place of residence for more than a week now. Thing is, yes, Red Cross, City Mission, Calvary Church, others, she's been helping them. But this city has resources. They could put them in a hotel or other places just to stay, to get a roof over their head or something like that. Thing is that I don't think it's appropriate that you use $418,000 of taxpayers' money to knock down those buildings, when that money could be used for what really needs to be fixed in this city. You have this city literally falling apart, Mayor, under your watch. You had the day of the news conference, and I was there, standing in the crowd supporting the victims. You, the DA, Mr. Bernard, were trying to take this two-step over the media as this here's question.
Mr. Carata, please address me as the president.
Well, I congratulate the media there and the fire department. The other thing is, much as I apologize to you, Mayor, thing is, you have been doing crime. You got crime after crime after crime, incident like that, week after week, month after month, year after year. Matter of fact, when you did a news conference and Texas two-stepping, what happened on Mount Pleasant? Shooting. Back in last month, gas stick on Broadway. Congratulations, fire department, with that. Had someone get shot on Page Street. Then you had incident at college, Schenectady County, somebody trying to rob a student. What makes you not think that would happen in your college? You have innocent after innocent after innocent. And then you're still going home getting your electricity, the casino? I mean, come on, man. The ball, as we say, the ball's in the court. Time to start doing your job or come November, see ya, because you and Peggy gonna be packing, because people waking up. Bye-bye, your reign's over.
Thank you. Joe Rodriguez. No? Oh, okay. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council, Mayor, again, the Gazette and the Albany Times Union reported that the city of Schenectady was the highest property tax in the Capital Region. And then, Madam President, the mayor was quoted in there saying he blamed everybody else except for his own administration and the administration of the city council. Just again, on tonight's agenda, the church street properties, you reduce their assessments by over 50%. Through claims in the last two years, you have reduced the contractors, developers, and so forth by their properties anywhere between 30 to 50%. We need a reassessment of what's happening. And when you take a look at the pilot programs, you have to take a look at, are they creating jobs? No, they're not. Because if you transfer from Erie Boulevard to 440 State Street and you say, "Well, we just created 21 jobs," no, you didn't. You just transferred them from one job to the other thing. Then all of a sudden, now you have the battery plant for the GE. They're now shutting that down to almost down to around 80 employees. The paper was a little bit off. They say 80 to 200, because I think it was 200, and I think the Albany was 80 people. But, does that mean now that we reduce the pilot? We should, and we should increase that and be able to recover. We have nearly a 20% reduction at the Gulup headquarters on employees. That should also be reduced, and the pilot should be increased so we can capture more money, because there's no jobs being produced. It's a job loss. Why are we doing pilots to put in luxury townhouses over on Broadway? We're putting in luxury townhouses at the Alcoa site. It doesn't help us with affordable and accessible housing at all. It's just the whole entire piece of what's happening. And as I just said previously, over 50% of DSS recipients live in the city. If you turn around and you put these people back to work and give them an opportunity for jobs, then you would lower the DSS cost, which would lower your county taxes. The county taxes are at 15% of your total tax bill. So you need to take a look at the whole entire piece of what you're actually doing. You have the sales tax agreement. You're losing nearly $4.5 million per year. In 2008, they said the sales tax would not increase. In 2008, they said the sales tax would not increase. It's increased by $10 million. If you use the old formula, you would receive over $4.5 million per year. You know, these things that are happening are on you guys' watch, and that's basically what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.[913.61][913.61](APPLAUSE).
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. We got a lot of streets and potholes and a lot of bad curbs, and seniors are trying to get across the street and can't get across the street at all. They need to put up more walk lights for the seniors. It's very hard for them to get around. And with these speeders, they speed like crazy. It's out of line. And all the crime that's going on in Schenectady, that's got to stop too. So we've got to do something about that, too.
That's it. Thank you. Joe Kelleher.[962.61][962.61](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, City Council, thank you. I was going to sing for Vince, but I'm saving that. First of all, I wanted to say thank you and congratulations to those folks that made it through the last election. I certainly, during the last election, I believe that some people may have taken things that were said as hurtful and that was certainly not the intention, and I certainly want to apologize for anything that may have been implied that hurt the candidates or their families. With that being said, I want to wish all the candidates for this new election this year all the best for this 2015 election. May they be blessed and treat one another with fairly, very fairly and respectfully, and remember that they are a representation of those whom they serve. Regarding the J Street Fire, I want to mention about the outpouring of blessings and support from the community. Reverend Brad Jones, I consider him a friend from Christ Church, he had the foresight back last year to work with the local emergency management and becoming an emergency shelter at Christ Church there at the corner of State and Swan Streets. Our hearts and prayers go out to the families of those who were lost and those who are looking for a new home, and we'll certainly continue to be out there for them. As anybody who knows me knows that I am an advocate of our local veterans, I want to mention that I've become a person who can vet people to go to the Veterans Miracle Center. So anyone who happens to be a veteran in the area and needs any type of assistance whatsoever, as far as spiritual assistance, assistance in finding a new job, or just taking care of things for simple things, like just things for their home, the Veterans Miracle Center is located in Albany, or rather, in Colony on Interstate Drive, and I have, I'm one of the folks who've become vetted or can vet them to go over there and gather anything that they need, even the most simple of needs, as far as household goods or clothing. Inasmuch, the freeze-out that we had at the American Legion post, we were able to collect a whole bunch of clothing, and we're in the process of opening what we call the Veterans' Closet. Inasmuch, we also need flags over at the American Legion, so if you have retired flags and any of these things that I mentioned above, you can contact me at area code 518-406-6487, or visit the American Legion website at AL1092NY.us. Thank you.
Thank you.[1137.51][1137.51](APPLAUSE). Stefan Krug.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Councilwomen, Councilmen. Vince, happy birthday. My name is Stefan Kruger. I'm a volunteer with Rody Empire Rescue. As most of you know, we've been coming here since last summer, asking for changes in the animal control hold and the way the animal control hold was run. Some of the changes that we asked for was a Facebook page, and that's been done. But sometimes it takes six or seven days before a dog is posted after it's taken in. The stray holds up by day seven. So I don't know what the delay is in the seven days, why it's taken so long. And we've also found that there's a hidden animal control page where they post dogs that you can't comment on them, you can't share it, you can't like it. I don't know why there's two animal control pages instead of one. Also, I'm here for Rody Empire. We are here offering our help. Once again, we want to pull dogs from the hold. We want to take dogs. We want to help dogs. That's what we do. We're a rescue group. And we've been rebuffed every step of the way since we've started coming to these meetings, and I'd hate to think that's retaliation for speaking out about the conditions. One more thing about the devastating J Street Fire, we know is horrible. There was people that lost everything, and some of those people also lost their pets in that fire. And a lot of those people were calling animal control, and they were getting no response at all. And I know you heard about Zeus, who was saved after eight days. The owner of Zeus actually made contact with one of the animal control officers, and she was told to lose my number and hung up on. We know that the dogs weren't involved in animal control, they were going to the APF and Mohawk Hudson, but all she had to say is call APF or call Mohawk Hudson. Just to say lose my number and hung up on is extremely unprofessional. So, thank you very much. Happy birthday, Vince.
Thank you.[1266.15][1266.15](APPLAUSE). All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on city business, so I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we will move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who came down to speak tonight, especially on the public hearing for the closing of the underground tunnel on Groul Park. They made their feelings very clear, and I'm sure will act accordingly on this. The Bellevue Preservation Incorporated will hold its monthly meeting Thursday, April 9, since we have a week off next week. I thank you for giving me that for my birthday present, Madam President. I appreciate it.
Anytime.[1315.41][1315.41](LAUGHTER).
Thursday, April 9, 7:00 PM at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, 1911 Fairview Ave. Guest speaker will be Schenectady City Police Chief Brian Kilcullen. The public is invited. I think Fire Chief Senical is going to reschedule because he was kind of busy when he was supposed to speak at the last meeting. But again, thank the police and fire departments for their great work all throughout the tragedy across the street. You can't say enough about that. There's been some miracles with the animals. I think there was a cat was found too yesterday, and that's another miracle along with Zeus. So there's still rays of hope in all the devastation, and some good things can happen. One last thing, I did get a present from my son, who's an eBay fanatic, and he found the manual, City Council Manual from 1937. I know Ms. Porterfield has asked for this, so maybe we can reinstate this at some point when we're elected. If we're anybody that's elected, they get a little manual to go with it. But one thing I found very interesting, Mayor, is the tax rate back then was $43,000 a thousand. Of course, it was partial assessment. I think houses were assessed about $2,000, but it's just kind of amazing, that part. And council, city council salaries were $1,000. 1937, but I guess it hasn't grown that much.[1407.33][1407.33](LAUGHTER). It's 70, almost 70 years, so that's kind of another interesting, or I'm sorry, 80, it's getting closer to 80 years. So anyhow, and the mayor's salary was $1,000, but it wasn't a strong mayor back then. But this is interesting reading. It'll let whoever wants to borrow it can borrow, but it's a pretty interesting book, and I thank my son for giving me this, and I thank everyone for their birthday wishes. But from now on, I'm using dog ears, that's all, from this point on. So it'll be every seven years I'll have a birthday. Thank you.[1438.41][1438.41](LAUGHTER).
Thank you. Ms. Perezzo.
Thank you. Just a quick announcement. The Schenectady Firefighters Cancer Foundation is presenting "Laughter Saves Lives Comedy Tour" Saturday, April 4, and the proceeds from this event will fund the Schenectady Firefighters Cancer Foundation in their missions to support local firefighters in their fight against cancer. So if you're interested, tickets are just $30, which I think is a very reasonable cost for a night out, right? And lots of laughs, very cathartic. Saturday, April 4, 8:00 PM. And you can purchase them by going to, just by chance, the Proctor's website, but, you know, this is a great fund, and it's a total volunteer effort from our firefighters, and they do so much as it is to support this extra that they've taken on. Just want to remind everybody to get out there and have fun at the same time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Porterfield? Oh, nope. Okay. Mr. Kosher.
And I, too, would just like to make the announcement of the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association meeting, which will be this Wednesday. We have a very honorable guest with us, so we have the mayor himself will be there. So again, we meet now on the fourth Wednesday of every month. Woodlawn used to be the second Wednesday of every month, and we've just changed it because now it coincides with our Woodlawn Preserve and our Woodlawn Park meetings. So you'll get a three-for-one bang. Again, we meet at the Ancient Order of Hibernians, so again, it's the fourth Wednesday, which of course is this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. And if I may, I just want to read a very brief announcement here. This was sent to us by an email from Sharon Litt Schmidt and of course Reverend James Bookout. Just a reminder that the Luntin events is coming up, and it's their second annual Good Friday Cross Walk, and it will be this Friday, and begins at 10:00 AM at the Holy Name of Jesus National Catholic Church on 1040 Pearl Street. And the walk will end at the hosting church, which is the Bridge Christian Church, which is of course at 735 Crane Street, and they estimate that to be about 11:45 in the morning. And one final thing, just want to, congratulations to our neighbors as well, the Scotia-Glenville Boys Team, and of course the Shanda-Holam Boys Team, national champions, state champions again, I'm sorry, state champions in the Class A and AA2 finals. We happened to go to the Glenfall Civic Center yesterday, it was a great crowd, and Scotia-Glenville, of course, was undefeated. They played another undefeated team. And again, congratulations to those men in those two school districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Wish Mr. Riggi happy birthday, and many more of them. Do again want to thank the men and women of the police and fire department for the tremendous job that they did on March 6 and the subsequent days after that, the command staff, both of the police and fire department, Chief Senical, Wayne Bennett, Brian Kilcullen. And the broad-based community outpouring that came, you know, the nature of these things, you get a lot of times there's disinformation, and people will take what I will call interesting positions in some of their comments. I'm not quite sure where they come from, but the response, I think, should make this community proud, and we're still working through that. The demolition has progressed a little bit faster today than I think we'd thought, and so the site there is becoming more stable, looking to work with some of the adjacent businesses and get them open as quickly as we can, and continue to remediate the site in a timely and efficient manner. And I will tell you that the expenditure of the $400,000, a little over $400,000, I think, there's really no other option that the city has. Since I've been in this position, we have not let the burned-out, dilapidated buildings sit, that we take control of the site and we remediate them in a quick manner. You know, we drive through the city and other communities across upstate New York where you have buildings that have had fires or other events in, they're dilapidated, they're an embarrassment, they decrease the value of the adjacent property, and really Schenecty is setting the example on how to best manage some of these properties. It's not a perfect process. We learn from every event, but I'm proud of the response that have come from not only given the public safety, but the support staff, Bureau of Service, and working with other agencies in terms of dealing with this situation. And I thank the council for your support and your working with us, and we look forward to going forward and doing a lot of the good things that are happening in this community and continuing to build on those. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I would just like to also commend you and your staff. I think this has been handled as well as it possibly could have been, and we, again, of course, think often about the victims. And happy birthday, Mr. Riggi. You're not quite caught up to me yet, but you're working on it.[1778.11][1778.11](LAUGHTER). Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Mr. Kosher, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.